Door down to get in right now, so we'll, we'll call and meet in order. Mr. Patterson, would you lead us in the indication, please, sir?
Gentlemen, please stand. Good gracious heaven, Father, we want to come to you again for the most important thing, ask your presence to be with us tonight, that you would lead, guide, direct us, Lord, that you'd give us wisdom. Thank you for everyone here tonight, Lord, with nasty weather, Lord, we just appreciate everyone's interest in Fanning County. And we want this meeting to be what you want it to be. Lord, can you give us, give us the strength and wisdom to do that exactly tonight? And we ask these things in Christ's name.
Thank you.
We are going into place, Lord, it's our place to lead.
The life of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, before we get started, I made a boo-boo on unfinished business number three. I actually put the wrong name down for number three on the unfinished business. That's supposed to have been a branch request from Ms. Kaufman that has been tabled from the last two meetings. So I would, I'd like to make a motion to change that, to reflect that on the agenda as well. I'll make a motion, ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you. All right, so number one, under unfinished business, this is the approval of the minutes of the January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five regular scheduled board meeting. Mr. Cersei, any air or roll missions in those minutes?
What did I say, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Patterson?
I have none, Chairman.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, the next one, number two is approved the minutes of the February sixth, twenty twenty five special call meeting. Mr. Cersei, any air or roll missions in those minutes?
No, sir.
Mr. Patterson?
No, sir, I have none.
Make a motion to approve those minutes and ask for a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, so number three, under unfinished business, this was the board discussion action of a branch request from Ms. Kaufman. Susan Kaufman, this was, gentlemen, as you know, has been tabled a couple of times. Myself and Keith Nicholson went out and met Ms. Kaufman at her home. We done a little measuring and, and we felt like we'd come up with a solution. And instead of ten feet from the right of way, or off the road edge, I'm sorry. Instead of ten feet off the edge of the road, we were able to get fourteen feet out there. It is a private road, it is tight in there as it is, but we felt, we felt we both could live with the fourteen, fourteen feet off the edge of the road. Any, any discussion, Mr. Cersei?
No, sir, it meant qualifications and I'm good with it.
Mr. Patterson?
No, I have none.
I'll make a motion to approve this branch request and I'll ask for a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Under unfinished business, we have a board discussion action. We have our EMA Director Patrick Cook, the Tagging Chief Josh Curtis, and our Fire Chief Larry Thomas. This is on the regarding the award of a bid on a ladder truck. We prefer to get it to last, please.
So people to look at the bills on these trucks, a wide range of experience from our department. And Josh Curtis is ahead of this, beginning some lectures.
So like Director Cook said, we, we take it very serious because it's a significant purchase. And just as a reminder to those that may not know, we're replacing a nineteen eighty-three model ladder truck. So it's going to be a significant upgrade no matter what we do moving forward. But we brought in current firefighters and former firefighters that work on ladder trucks every day from City of Atlanta, City of Milton, Bonnet County, Cherokee County, City of Woodstock, just to get their viewpoints with us. So that it wasn't just us saying, hey, we think this is what we need. We brought them in and used their experience with each of these companies to kind of get some feedback that way. So when we sat down with that committee, we narrowed it down to two. So after we narrowed it down to two, we took a group of about ten of us and actually went and put hands on the E-one and the Pierce. Because we narrowed it down to kind of those two. After we went and then saw both demonstrations of both trucks, we come back, we went again over the details, and we held a vote with the committee and it was almost unanimous that we would recommend going with Pierce. The reason that we recommend, because it is a little bit more, it is a little bit longer reach, it's a hundred and seven foot versus a hundred foot. It is a steel ladder versus aluminum ladder. And really where that kind of comes down to is the tip load is higher, so it's a seven hundred and fifty pound tip load. So when we only have one aerial in the county, we want it to be as versatile as we can get it. So with that being said, if you try to do technical rescue off of it, the tip load is what's really important. So the department that we saw doing with the Pierce actually has it set up for their ropes to be off the tip of it, because they have that extra weight. The other things, a couple of other things that we really liked or found would be advantageous for us. The truck has crash avoidance built into it, it also has an airbag system for firefighter safety, which is becoming a bigger and bigger deal. As you all know, you get pressured every year from ACCG and all of these other groups about firefighter safety. So having an airbag system in it is something that they offer that's a little bit unique. It has features on the truck that are help with the setup of the truck, because we may not always have a full crew on a ladder truck when it responds to a call. So we wanted features that would make setup as easy as possible. A couple of the things that they offer is a three sixty camera system that will show when the, when the driver pulls up to a seat, it will show where the outrigger's going to land before they even get out of the driver's seat of the vehicle. It also has a screen inside that shows the slope, the pitch, how the truck's set up. So it tells you if it's going to be safe or not before I even open my door to start operations. On the actual turntable, which is the base of the ladder that the operator stands on, it has a screen there that shows if you're putting the ladder into a pine, whether you're getting into unsafe zones or not, which is really helpful, especially when you're not on this truck every day, that the system's telling you, hey, you're getting close to being on the edge and you need to watch out where you're going. It has an auto level system on the truck, which will assist greatly with setup. So instead of running around, if you only have one person setting the truck up, instead of running around looking at levels, the truck will actually level itself like a camper, is the best way I can describe it. I'm sure the manufacturer would not like me describing like. Another thing that they offer is independent front suspension, which improves with maneuverability and handling of the vehicle. This one seats six versus seating four, which is, you can take it or leave it, but I think that's a good point that we have room to drill into it. Because we're looking for this to be a long-term investment for the county. Another big feature was it had a storage box built into the ladder. So when I go back to talking about technical rescue and using it for multiple operations, it's already set up to house some of our equipment on the ladder itself, so that we don't have to store it in the truck. It's there, it's easily accessible, and we can get that equipment readily, it's already there. I feel like it's been a really tough decision, it's been really hard. One of the things that we did reach out to them, or to Pierce and said to the dealer, to ten eight, and said that, you know, we really like the product, we feel like it's a good fit, because of the outrigger, the way the outrigger system works, the way we drove. We actually took the firefighters that we invited into the discussion and had them go through downtown with us and talk about operations, where we could set these vehicles up, what works best, what doesn't. All of those things kind of played into it, but we called them back and said, hey, you are a little bit high. So they offered a prepaid discount. So that prepaid discount would, that they offered us, is seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. As part of that discount, what they have proposed is equipping the truck, so that when it gets here, we use that money allotted for, to get a lot of the big purchases for equipment, so that we're not having to come back in front of the board and ask for more money in a year's time. And another really big advantage is this vehicle being off of a grant. The grant will come up for review in the middle of August, I think it's August twenty-sixth. So August twenty twenty-sixth, the grant comes up for review. Ten eight or Pierce is estimating a delivery in March of twenty twenty-six. They have agreed that after June first of twenty twenty-six, they will start paying a hundred day, a hundred dollars a day penalty for every day that is beyond that. So that is their, I guess, handout to say, hey, we're willing to work with you guys and we want the truck delivered before the August twenty twenty-six deadline, so that the grant doesn't go into review. The grant going into review may or may not be approved, there's no guarantee. The other manufacturers are a little bit longer on their lead time, so that was another reason that we kind of voted in towards Pierce. So the total, the total cost with the discount and adding the equipment back in would still be the original cost of one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Is what we would recommend. I'm sure you've got questions for me.
I got a bunch.
I know, let's hear it. I'll talk all day about trucks.
And I'll probably ask questions all day about that truck. But as far as equipment goes now, you just said seventy-eight thousand dollars would go back into that, into the equipment to furnish the truck?
Correct.
Is, are you going, is that the equipment that you want in that truck? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, that's, to be, to be completely transparent, seventy-eight thousand dollars on a ladder truck, we're going to have to be budget-minded. And we probably won't get every wish list out of them. If you were to take that whole group that was sitting there on day one and ask them, every piece of equipment that should be on a ladder truck, seventy-eight thousand dollars wouldn't cover it. But it's going to get the big ticket items, it's going to get the air packs on it, it's going to get a K-12 saw, it's going to get a chainsaw on it, it's going to get a positive ventilation fan, it's going to have all the hose on it. And just the five-inch large diamber hose is about ten thousand dollars to put on these trucks, so it's a big purchase.
And that'll give you every hose?
That'll get us all the hoses that we need, the nozzles that we need, the air packs, a thermal imagery camera for the truck. And the other thing that we're, that they are negotiating in is putting a burner on the truck, so that when we're out away from the station, it's charging batteries on the equipment they're going to put on.
Okay, so the only thing then, that you're going to may have to come back for, because you'll get the water, of course, there. But, so, there shouldn't be a lot, should there? I mean.
It should be an insignificant amount. It should be something that I think that we can kind of put our heads together and use what equipment we have available, like in our overstock, to get what we need.
So will you take anything off the, the ladder truck we have? If it failed, it's passing, correct?
No, it passed.
It did pass?
But the hose is coming up, it's within the, by the time this truck gets here, we're going to be really close to it being out.
And what does that mean?
That when it starts failing inspection, as far as the hose goes, then has to be replaced.
So you just don't replace the hoses?
Yeah, we do it. We do it, but we know, like, in our minds, we, what we, if we buy, if we spend this amount of money on an aerial apparatus for the county, knowing that we're putting hose on it that potentially fails, doesn't give us the warranty. So having new hose on it would make no sense.
How much grant money do we got?
Eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven, and twenty-seven cents.
Okay. And you said that March would be the day that they're supposed to deliver this?
March is when their anticipated delivery is. That they signed the, the actual agreement that they sent over, says that they have until June first before they start paying.
So we don't, if they don't have it here by March, we don't start, they don't start paying the hundred dollars a day until after January?
Correct.
Okay.
That gives them a little bit of flexibility.
I keep reading and writing on this last one, so, all right. But that should cover it, that's about all I've got, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Patterson?
I think I've covered it pretty well.
I could talk all day about the truck.
No, no.
This is, what I really wanted just to show is, I feel like we've done our due diligence. We really fought really hard about this, because we don't want to spend this money and get the truck and go, we wish we'd have, it would have had X, Y, and Z.
No, no, I understand that. And the thing about it is, is that the steel ladder compared to the aluminum, duh, you know, you want the best. And Fanning County deserves the best, but, you know, that's good, you're doing your, you're doing your homework and trying to bring people in that knows what our area is made. And I have, I have no, no problem.
And all of the people that we invited in actually have personal ties, they live in the county, so it was helpful to have that insight of, this is what we do every day on a ladder truck, that we live here in the general area.
The ladder's a little bit taller than that other one.
It's a little bit, it's a hundred and seven foot reach. Well, I think this is for us, I mean, for me probably, is like a once-in-a-lifetime purchase, because I'm considering replacing a forty-year-old vehicle, you know? And, and our hopes is, whatever we purchase today will hopefully answer that song as well, we hope. So I, I know this, we, we made a lot of purchases for Republicans, that's the public works.
Yeah.
I think this is really one of the more significant purchases we've made.
What is your thought on that?
Make a good deal.
I got a ladder at the house and a lot of those.
Just so, like, just to be completely transparent, that truck has to be decommissioned. We can't sell it to another private department or anything like that as part of the grant.
So Josh, do the math for me, what we're going to, we're going to have to pay, how we're going to pay for all of it? Okay, we're going to have to use some of our general fund, so.
So what we would end up doing is paying for initially?
All of it.
We would pay all of it initially. When we get the grant back, and then the City of Blue Ridge has agreed to pay the difference on it. Yeah.
That helps. Susan of Blue Ridge, you talked to them already?
I've talked to a couple of council people and heard our negotiations, it's lost. You know, that was agreed upon, they're saying the same thing today. So they, they see the need for it as well, and truthfully, it is, it's kind of a two-in-one deal for them, you know? We were looking at a engine to begin with, and for basically the same price as replacing the engine, you're getting a ladder truck and an engine. You'll get it with, that's fully equipped. So that, that was kind of what we were looking at to begin with.
How are we, how the county going to pay for it?
Yeah, the county will pay for it, it'll be out of the general fund.
General fund?
Mm-hmm. And we, we did cash in some aluminum can last week, feel like we got them out.
Yeah, if we get rid of that old fire truck, if we get rid of that old fire truck for scrap metal, we'll make something off of it.
Thing, thing about this is, is Patrick, obviously we give those guys all the, all the credit for this. They worked to find these grants. And so this has been kind of ongoing for over a year. So we, we've really been trying to make sure that, hey, when it comes time, we were ready to go.
Yeah.
Time is here, and they just needed to bring a switch truck that our department felt was going to be the best for Fanning County moving forward.
I thank you for saying that, Mike.
Absolutely, always.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
No, I'm good.
Patrick, we already, that grant has been accepted, does it look good with it?
What was the total amount, you got one, seven, or whatever?
One, seven oh nine, four seven nine.
All right, as he said, I'll make the motion to purchase the Pierce ladder truck in the amount of one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I'll make that motion, ask for a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Ah.
All right, thank you, John.
Don't come back. Every year.
All right, I'll bring this new business. We have a branch request from old Michael Ferguson, the guy who had a home fifteen feet from the edge of Mount Thompson Circle. Is there anybody here that posts this branch request? Anybody here for it? Okay. All right. You know, when I have to look at this, it's about the only places to put that, I think people agree.
Yeah. And they're not going to have parking on the side. The parking will be on the side, it will not be in front of the building between the structure and the road.
Okay. And that's how many feet from the?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
And that would be the closest portion to that road, that's not a home and end of that.
Correct.
Six, seven feet, don't we? All right. Do you have any discussion on this?
No, sir.
And I'll ask, sorry. I'll ask for a motion to accept this branch request?
Make that motion.
I'll ask for a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, the next on the list, this is an intergovernmental agreement between Fanning County and the City of Copper Hill. Gentlemen, as you know, West Tennessee Avenue is, in my mind, probably used by more Fanning Cannons than it is fifty from Tennessee. So we had kind of reached out to Mayor Barker a while back to see if they might be able to work something out to get that road taken care of, to help us all out, in that sense. And I think we have a couple of our accounts here that would very much agree with us, that that road needs to be fixed, and front end alignments and tires and so forth and so on.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yes, one of these. But, so I would, I would ask, after negotiations, or after discussion here, that you guys consider going into this intergovernmental agreement with the City of Copper Hill to fix West Tennessee Avenue. So that being said, all over the discussion, Mr. Cersei?
Man, I was raised down there, and you do need that road fixed. I mean, you know, I mean, it's rough, and I mean, I need to be an ambulance driver, I need to be on the gurney of an ambulance. Yeah, man, oh, gosh, yeah. But no, man, we need to be good neighbors. You know, if we can help you, you know, that's why we're here. So I don't see no issues with it, I think, is it going to be striped and all of a sudden?
Sure.
Okay. You going to put that Fanning County touch on it, make it look beautiful? I'll dig for it then, if we can do that.
So what, give you a little bit more detail, what are we going to do with it? I mean, you're going to ask all that, what?
That's the plan, yeah, we'll have to do some milling down there, sort of straighten out some of the moon craters, you know, so.
Moon crater? Right, it's real.
And you're all give this money?
Absolutely.
Okay, appreciate it.
And just so everybody know, Mayor Barker just come into office. So it's not like he's, you know, been trying to put this on the back burner to get somebody else to do it. This was, you know, I can reach out to him, he didn't reach out to me. So I just, I thought it would help us all out in the long run.
Yeah.
Going down West Tennessee Avenue.
Help everybody out.
And because it is not Fanning County property, we have to have intergovernmental agreement. And the bottom line is that it services as many Fanning County residents and visitors to Fanning County as it probably would residents or visitors to Copper Hill, so it's a win-win.
Yeah. Save us some, some, I'll have to work down there to shop too, busting tires, yeah, cool.
Yeah, all right, so that being said, I'll make the motion to enter in for this intergovernmental agreement with the City of Copper Hill for West Tennessee Avenue. And I'll ask for a second?
A second, yeah.
All in favor?
Ah.
Yeah, you make mouth check going over this.
All right, so number three, under new business, this is property on Sugar Creek. This is off Tennis Court Road. Gentlemen, I think you've been made aware about the thirty acres that we possibly have been looking into on Tennis Court. Personally, we feel that this would be an asset to Fanning County and the further expansion of services we offer to this county. Being thirty acres, and it's, it's, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, it's great property.
I'm going to buy it.
How you feel? And again, we feel like it would be great for future expansion of services that we do offer. So we, we were offered a price on this, after some negotiation, it did come down to a different price, where we felt like it's a good price for the property. And it'll be thirty acres, so y'all have any discussion on this before we?
What price was it normally?
It's, it'd be five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Comes out to seventeen-five an acre. I'd love to tell you she's wanting forty thousand acres to begin with, but, you know, it's not great.
Any discussion on it?
Mr. President? No, sir, I just think that, uh, with some of the plans we have for the future, that, that's gonna come in real handy for, for the county and this is the right time.
Mr. President?
Right, thank you, well, good, that's well, I think it's a good, good buy.
Having said, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase, uh, thirty acres for the amount of five hundred twenty five thousand dollars that will be paid out of our general fund, and I will ask for a second.
My second?
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number four, we have, uh, board discussion action, we have public works directors act correctly. And then regarding the Fannie County road.
Yeah, I, we, we updated the road list, uh, last meeting and, uh, I guess I sort of went up a slip. It's, well, the Davis Road, that's what we got on it, it actually is Davis Drive.
Davis Drive.
So we need one by that. Had too many drives on that thing.
How many roads you got on that place?
The, the road list altogether?
Yeah, I mean, is it for this year?
Yeah, it is this year, yeah, I think we have, I think it was like, uh, a little over a mile, mile and quarter that we had to do. It's just a little short stuff that we would put on there.
Anybody any discussion on this?
No.
I'll make a motion to change that, uh, from Davis Road to Davis Drive, and I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Don't let that happen again.
Might as well stay up here, right? All right, so, this, uh, number five would be regarding purchase of equipment.
Yes, sir, you have it in your, uh, plan here. We were looking to, uh, purchase a piece of equipment, it's actually a motor grader. We've got one that's been, if we got one that's been, sort of wounded, and, uh, I just think you spend money, you put money in a, you know, a bad thing, so. Uh, we got a John Deere out there, it's been, it's probably been down for about eight or nine months now and, uh, we just put a transmission in by two years ago, fifty thousand, and this thing's got a lot of Arizona, a little over eight thousand Arizona. And John Deere, if you don't know, but anything about John Deere, just anybody can work on a John Deere, and that's, that's a, that's a lethal thing. Uh, it takes a John Deere specialist for it coming out, so you can't, you're not supposed to be touching it, it's for replacing parts on it or their, even, so, with that being, we're, we're decided we get out the John Deere business with that one and, uh, get something new that we go and do and be, be really dependable. I think that one's probably in the late eighties, early nineties maybe, and so it's, uh, it's done its thing, so. This one we got coming, coming up here is a, uh, i- is a, uh, Komatsu. It's got all the bells and whistles that you could think of for a motor grader and to make it easier on the driver, operator. It's got, I mean, it's just got all kinds of stuff in it to make it, uh, creature comforts altogether.
Where they from?
Uh, this one's, if they're out of, uh, Calhoun, so this is out of.
Komatsu?
Yeah, that's a little, that's a factory of equipment, so they're buying. Komatsu's a sort of like Caterpillar, they're, they're probably a company, we got that Komatsu loader out there. That being said, with the loader we have out there, it's got like a, uh, uh, I don't know what the exact correct word for it is, but they monitor anything that goes on, anything, anytime it's cranked up, where it's at, what condition, what thing, temperatures, they know that. And we were in snow and this, uh, truck, equipment truck rolls up, they're changing oil in the loader because they told that there's some time for the oil to be changed.
Yeah.
They got a great maintenance contract, I mean, they keep, keep it really nice.
They, they work it for many, and the only thing we're liable for to change is the air filter, they do everything.
With that money, they should.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll make it last a little longer also, too.
What's the life on one of these things?
Depends on the hours, uh, and how they're taken care of, so, just, it just, there's a lot of depending.
So, like, the late eighties, early nineties, when we're replacing?
Yeah.
Stems.
Yeah.
If we look back at how many roads were gravel back then?
Yeah.
As opposed to how many miles were graveling?
We got seventy two, but I think we're seventy miles of dirt road right now. I don't know if it sounds like a lot of, they've been graded.
What's, what's the average width?
Depends on the roads, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, uh, narrow roads and there's a lot of, uh, big roads in Waikiki too, up on the mountain, that thing's probably thirty foot wide in place, and then we got some probably ten foot.
Because this, the old grader is what, twelve does what?
Twelve foot.
And this is here's full tank.
Correct, you can't get it twelve anymore. You look on the front of that book and they said, I, I asked them about trying to get one, Komatsu, but the, and the big grader does not make one. You can get one with small ones, you know, by my spray, small driver or something like that, but we need some heavy enough spray with fourteen's, use ton of two more feet, you know, it's not like it's.
Yeah. And what are you gonna do with this old job there?
Okay, that's, that's the cream of the crop, I guess, we're gonna try to trade this one in, and I got a price along fifty six thousand seven hundred dollars on trading.
They gonna, this is for sure?
Yeah. You see it right there in front of you?
I just wanna make sure, just what they're gonna give us.
They're, yeah, they're gonna give us that.
So the one that's out there now is a demo unit, correct?
The one that's out there now is a demo, it don't have a lot of featurement that we, we'll be getting on this one. The scaffire on the back and all, it's just, it was just a plain demo for us, that's its life, it's demo, order it, whatever you call it. So we'll be sending brand new or whatever, if we get this one.
Well, uh, I guess last week when Zach and Luke got it, it started nice and soon, uh, so, uh, it'll be good for a long time. It's really nice.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, probably.
All right, it's over my head, it didn't get up there?
Well, you had to have a boost, but I mean, it was rough.
Yeah, this thing, I mean, you can compare the build of them to the John Deere to that one, and I'm not, I'm not picking John Deere around, but just the build of this thing is so heavy built, it's, I mean, it's a real alley-oop, so, even our loader we got is, is tough.
Okay, what'd you want to talk on this, how many?
Uh, I think it was three, I don't remember exactly when this came out, I'm thinking it was, uh, three, three thousand hours or five years.
Yeah.
Three, uh, three years, five thousand hours, like, I think it's the five years, I think it's about that. And they cut everything, like I said, but the air filter, so, and they come to us.
Do we run it up yet for five years and all?
I don't know.
Uh, I mean, you see what I'm saying, we can like, you know, turn it up three thousand hours in two weeks.
No, 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 I was looking back and some of them, you know, five hundred hours is probably a, a big number for a motor grader, you know, what I think. Just depends on what you're doing with it, so we, hopefully when we go paving, we'll be using it with us, with the outfits and then I showed the builder and showed the lighting.
Five, or three thousand hours, that's, that's not idle time, that's actually runtime, right?
My switch is on at this, yeah.
Does this come out though, Sheriff? Okay.
Good job, I'll let you run it, I'll make you.
It's our insurance pay though.
Something, something's pretty late, my guy's kind of, you know, you get something new and it kind of, so this thing, it's, it's got strapping within, but it's also all the controls here.
I saw, uh.
Your, 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 your palm, that's upstairs, it's like you're, you're gonna have to take your hand off it. Controls the stairs, it's, it's very, very.
It had a camera in it too.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah.
All right, gentlemen, any other discussion on this?
No.
I haven't.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to purchase this, uh, piece of equipment, motor grader, now two hundred and forty seven thousand, two hundred ninety eight dollar fifty seven cents come out of public works plots, I'm, ask for that motion.
I might get a motion.
Last for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When, when, when will you be taking it? Then you, I had to talk with Charlie, I'll call him tomorrow and let him know, but I think he's got one on the last, I don't know where to get here. Probably come out of our, we'll get it.
And then you put that sticker on paper by yours polish.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell them I said it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
That'd be worth a T, yeah.
That'd be big. Done there, done there.
All right, number six, we have board discussion action, this is a state of Georgia, city of Blue Ridge agreement, uh, stormwater management, stormwater facility and green infrastructure, globally impact development, integrated management practices. Um, it's inspection and maintenance and, and I can read all these pages, it won't be.
Just two more deals.
So basically what this is, this has to do with the Fannie County Library, and, and the, this has to do, obviously, with the state of Georgia, city of Blue Ridge, Fannie County, um, and basically what it's saying, uh, whereas the property owner of Fannie County recognizes that the storm, um, drain structure, pipe water, quality integrated management practices in all aspects of stormwater management facility uh, must be maintained for the development called Fannie County Library. Basically what this is doing is it's giving, uh, where it is designated, Keith Nicholson, whether he likes it or not, uh, he's entitled to building official, he's gonna be our authorized representative to oversee this and make sure that everything is right. So I think that kind of sums it up in a way, too.
Put the net up.
Yeah, so, if anybody wants to come to this, I'll let you read it.
Okay. Wonderful start on that.
Um.
Okay.
Yeah, this, but, ground breaks both got first of all.
Cool, all right.
So that's, uh, that's us going into this agreement, um, and I'd like to keep them some to get over here.
I'll vote, uh, Keith, please, and have to oversee it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm asking for that motion, so you, you, say yeah, man?
Yeah, I'll say yeah.
And I'm gonna second that motion. So all in favor? Uh, you, you've been nominated.
Congratulations. It's wonderful. It's wonderful.
All right, that brings us to, uh, public commentary. Anybody have anything to say, raise your hand, come on up, tell us what's on your mind. See if we can easy dip, there's something bad on you. Anybody? All right, we'll close public commentary. Gentlemen, is there a need for, uh, executive session tonight? Care of nothing, I'll say no.
Don't matter if I do or not.
Do you have a need for executive session?
No, I'll be it.
Oh, having been said, I'll make a motion to adjourn and I'll ask for a second.
My second?
All in favor? Thank you all.